Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Good morning, those of you in the back. Our Budget Committee is about to begin. Could you please, in the back, hello?
So basically, we all just try to desperately count hands.
About to get gavel'd down.
We've got to start.
All right, everybody. Thank you for being in here. I appreciate you being here. I'm Sally Bagshaw. I am Chair of this Budget Committee. Thanks to my colleagues who are here with me. We have a giant agenda this morning, and we are about to get started. We're going to have 20-minute public comment. I know there's a lot more than 20 of you here. We're going to start with one minute apiece. And at the conclusion of that 20 minutes, I'll have a discussion among my colleagues to see what is up next and what direction we're going to go. But we have a lot to handle, so I'm going to ask you all to please, thank you very much, get signed up and get settled in. And the first three speakers are going to be David Haynes. David, it looks like Sepinazza, Patricia Sully. So if I can ask you each to get up there to the microphone. And we are going to have to be very strict with this one minute, so as many of you can speak that... Do you want to turn that to them, so that they can see? David, are you ready to go? Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much if you'll state your name. And then after David is another David. Patricia Sully, Mike McQuaid after that. David. David, you may be more comfortable over at that other microphone. It's taller for you.
One of the people of... Is this on? Yeah. One of the people of Seattle going to demand the City Council sober up. This budget is unconstitutional, treasonous, and racist. In fact, there's more money catering to drug addicts and their creepy nonprofit skimming the implosion caused by City Hall sabotaging police reform and undermining the health and well-being of community, catering to and embracing, protecting, and exempting from jail all the heroin crack and meth pushers, so college pukes can make a living in social welfare jobs, helping further destroy lives doing drugs, hiding behind inept-qualified nonprofits who show up at City Hall to get paid, fall in line after the mayor and council buy the same unaccountable activists off with taxpayer money. The City Council is empowering a bunch of racists at Got Green who are on record as hating white people, yet City Council cares more for races blaming the white man than holding accountable hypocrites who have no business getting paid by taxpayers to hate on innocent community.
All right. David, the next David. Sepinazza.
Sepinazza.
Thank you very much.
Close enough.
Sorry. Patricia Sully, Mike McQuaid, and then Mr. Finkelstein after that, please.
Thanks. So I'm David Sepinazza. I'm a physician, board-certified in addiction medicine and family medicine, who works in a few different locations in the Seattle area. And I know there are a lot of issues to be discussed today, but I'm here really to speak in support of safe consumption sites and cities continued and hopefully increasing funding to develop a site in Seattle. So as someone who's kind of on the front lines of providing both addiction treatment and substance use disorder treatment to people who are using, and then also as a primary care physician, seeing people who are not in treatment but just the complications of their drug use, I think it's a vital component to a multi-pronged approach to addressing this issue. One of the things I like to always bring up is, you know, my patients who are in treatment is frequently this treatment or harm reduction treatment or a safe consumption site. They frequently need both, because they do well for months at a time, they do great, they're coming, and then they have relapses and aren't coming and need a place to go. And I think a safe consumption site would be that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming down. Patricia, Mike McQuaid, Finkelstein, then Dan Otter.
Hi, my name's Patricia Sully. I'm a policy director from the Public Defender Association. I'm also here to speak in favor of funding for safe consumption spaces. We know that statistically, every single day, someone dies, a preventable death in Seattle, from a drug overdose. It does not have to be that way. We know that safe consumption spaces are not the answer to all of our problems, but they are an important stopgap. They're a bridge. When prevention has failed and treatment is not yet sought or available, safe consumption spaces have the power to keep people alive, to keep people healthier, and to help connect people to healthcare providers who can continue to guide them and protect them on their path. Providers like Dr. David Sepinazza, who just spoke. We have physicians, we have nurses, we have incredible support from the medical community. Hundreds of medical professionals have signed a letter to you last year stating their support for this intervention. So I'm just asking that you continue to fund and implement safe consumption spaces in our city to help save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Mike McQuaid, one moment. Sir, Mr. Finkelstein, Dan Otter, then Tony Radovich.
Chair Bagshaw, Honorable Council Members, this is on behalf of the Seattle Streetcar Coalition. A number of us are joining you today, are joining us today. On behalf of the Seattle Streetcar Coalition, we would like to formally request that the mayor and City Council properly fund SDOT to engage in the design and value engineering work necessary to keep the Center City Connector project on track for delivery. The Center City Connector is comprised of... The Seattle Streetcar Coalition, rather, is comprised of businesses, residents, neighborhood organizations, employers, and advocates of communities along the existing and future streetcar lines and across the greater Seattle area. Any actions that hinder construction of the streetcar could be devastating for three primary reasons. Our transportation system is at capacity now. There is little hope that buses will meet the need within the next decade, and additional light rail will not arrive for a decade and a half. In comparison, our existing streetcar lines can be connected within two years to serve some 20,000 people. Delay to serving those 20,000 people is self-inflicted, from which every transit rider will be a victim due to lack of capacity to move them.
Thank you, Mike. I've got to ask you to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Finkelstein? Do we have an S. N. Finkelstein?
Hello, my name is Naomi Finkelstein.
Oh, I'm sorry, Naomi.
It's all right. And I'm here to speak for housing for the city of Seattle. I think it's kind of ridiculous that we gave away Yes, the Terrace, we gave away Rainier Vista, and we gave away Holly Park, and now we're fighting again for public housing. But here we are. And I think there's, again, I say this almost every time I'm here, there's a lot of ways to erase trans lives. Forty percent of the kids on the street are transgendered, though they're only 7% of the population. That is no difference than when I was a kid and lived on the streets of New York, no difference in 50 years of activism. So I don't care if you get my pronoun right. Build housing for trans people! Build housing!
Thank you, Naomi. Thank you, Naomi.
Call me she any day of the week!
Naomi, thank you.
Build housing!
We got it. And... Dan Otter? Dan Otter, Tony Radovich, Chelsea Stevenson. And could Tony please come up to the microphone, so we're not waiting in between?
Hello, my name's Dan Otter. I'm an addictions nurse here in Seattle. I've spoken to you before about supervised consumption sites. I'm here again, because it's been two years since we made the recommendation to establish these. I'll echo what David Sepinazza said. If you think of drug use as a spectrum, from starting use to ending use, that usually takes 10 to 20 years till full recovery. So on one end, we can do prevention to stop people from using drugs. On the other end, we do treatment to help people get over their addictions. In the middle of that, there's people who are still actively using drugs. We've put a lot of money into prevention, we've put a lot of money into treatment. Supervised consumption sites, that's money for people who are still actively using. If we take that money away, if we keep delaying opening these sites, basically, we're saying those people are not worth our money, which some opponents may agree with. I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Radovich? Chelsea Stevens? Marty Jackson? And then Matt May... I think it's Maylie.
Good morning, Council members. I stand before you, yet again, slowly chipping away at stigma in strong support of safe consumption sites or community health engagement locations. Why do I support them? I support them because it means a faster social connectedness rather than to force isolation. It means to practice acceptance rather than intolerance. It means to fan self-worth rather than to fuel shame. It means to love rather than to disdain. There is plenty of good psychology behind what brings people closer to wellness and full potential. It is long past time that the ways in which we view and treat substance use line up less with opinion, personal moral beliefs, and socially transmitted misinformation, and instead more with what science tells us about human behavior and social development.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming. Chelsea Stevenson? Chelsea, Marty, and Matt?
Hi, my name is Marty Jackson. I'm with the Boys and Girls Clubs of King County. Wanted to come here and thank you all for your investment in our young people through the work that we're doing at the Boys and Girls Club. Every year, as you know, it is always challenging to ensure that there are no gaps in services with our young people, regardless of what new or innovative ideas come from the city or others who are... who want to reinvest into other programs. I do want to thank you all for investing in our young people. I do also have a young person here. I want to thank you, Council President Harrell, for your investment in our neighborhood. We are... We do serve Southie Seattle. We know that you have been committed and an advocate of ensuring that our young people are properly served, especially those who are marginalized and those who have been impacted by violence. And so we do thank you for that support, and we thank you for the rest of the council members. I'm going to switch it over to a young person we have today to testify, and it's within our two... The two people who signed up. And let you hear directly from her the return on your investment.
Thank you. And give us your name, please.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Oh, sorry. I'm Tanisha Scott. I was actually SYBPI youth for, I believe it's over a little bit over eight years. I started in middle school, and I actually just graduated college, and I honestly don't believe that I would be where I am today if I didn't start at SYBPI. So I started in middle school, and just from there, they got me interested in a lot of things. I actually majored in communication, because Ms. Marty was my case manager at the time, and she majored in communication. She got me interested in the whole institutionalized racism. That's actually what I did my senior project on. And just in general, I've learned a lot of... A lot of things from them, just all of the things that I went through. I learned a lot of communication skills. I learned a lot of things about just having a job in general, from where my peers don't know certain things. I just wouldn't be who I am today if I hadn't gone through the Boys and Girls Club. She inspired me to start... Go to college, just in general. I didn't even think I would graduate high school. So yeah, I am grateful for the Boys and Girls Club and everybody who has gone through everything to give.
Good. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Are you speaking?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Matt? So after Matt, please, we'll have Gabe Shelton and Patricia Hayden.
I would like to cede my time to students from the Nova Project High School to speak for themselves.
Okay. And can I ask how many people have signed up?
Just me.
Okay. In a minute?
One person.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Awen. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm a senior at Nova High School. As it stands, our teen health services are in a dire situation. Currently, we only have one nurse that comes in once a week. What that means is that students only have one day to be sick or injured, or one day to get the services that they need. We have been advocating for years to get a teen health center and have spent time teaching other educators on how to respect LGBTQ students. Our need is urgent so that we can provide direct access for services to LGBTQ youth in an environment where they can finally feel comfortable and unstigmatized. I've never felt safer than I have at Nova as a trans person. I can advocate for all LGBTQ youth, that this is what we desperately need. And what we need more than anything is startup money so that we can get this completed sooner than later. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And before you all leave, can I just say two things to you? First of all, thanks for coming. Secondly, to Mark Perry and some of your senior leadership, I've been working with them for three years. And we have money now. Thank you. Nice to see you. We have money now in our family and Ed Levy, thanks to a number of our colleagues who are up here who helped get that passed, and our city voters. $200,000 operating a year is going to your school, and Councilmember Sawant and I are putting forward $100,000 in this budget that will help with the capital. So please smile and know that we've been working with you, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Next up, we have Gabe Shelton, Patricia Hayden, and David Vasquez.
Hi, my name's Gabe Shelton. I'm a renter. I live in Wallingford. I work two jobs to pay that rent. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative as well. I'm always worried about paying my bills on time. It's really hard to live in this city, especially as a young person, and I don't even have it as hard as some people. And so when you guys repealed the Amazon tax, you threw away tens of millions of dollars for affordable housing. You just threw it away. It's like a slap to my face. I mean, it's like you're telling me that no care if I lose you. But you promised an alternative. Where's that alternative? We have one council member, Sawant, who's come up with some alternatives. The rest of you are silent. So I urge you to support Sawant's amendment to fund the construction of thousands of units of affordable housing. And you all love to talk about affordability, but talk is cheap. The budget is the time for action. Thank you.
Patricia Hayden, welcome.
My name is Patricia Hayden. And I'm Steve Dashil.
We are the co-chairs of the Seattle Human Services Coalition.
Throughout this budget process, we've been reminding you that although Seattle's economy is roaring for some, lower-income Seattle residents have not been reaping the rewards.
SHSC members have urged you to increase the scale of the city's investments in solutions up to the scale of the challenges our communities are facing.
However, the budget the mayor gave you fails to even maintain current community health and human services. We are here now to urge you to at least hold service levels steady as you cast your votes today.
One critical element to achieve this is to provide an inflation adjustment to HSD contracts of at least 3.5%.
You have the resources and the power to do more. The least you can do is maintain services, and we urge you to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Patricia, good to see you. David? And then Shirley Henderson and Zoe Sherman?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, my name is David Vasquez. I've been a resident of Seattle, Washington, for about four months. I come to you from the state of Texas. I love this state of Washington. I am currently a resident at 10C3. What I would like to bring to the attention of the board that is in front of me, I would like to bring to light to the City Council more housing options for people that are sober and that can pass a drug screening. I've been sober on my own for over six months, and I would like you to please give some more money to the people that are sober and actually trying. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Shirley Henderson, and then Zoe Sherman.
Yep, my name is Shirley Henderson, and I am the owner of a queer women-owned coffee shop hair salon in the Central District, which is one of the most rapidly gentrifying neighborhoods in the city, to the extent to which my staff and my wife and I cannot afford to live in the neighborhood that we serve. I'm here to say that San Francisco and Palo Alto passed a big business tax inspired by our fight here in Seattle for the Amazon tax. And now... But now we in Seattle are looking at not only an about-face rejection of that tax, but we're looking at a budget that is business as usual and is dangerous and reckless. The emergency of homelessness and affordable housing has only worsened in Seattle, and this budget reflects the deafness to civic needs and a full commitment to corporate greed. I support the humane amendments that were put forward by Councilmember Sawant, and I suggest that we all do that.
Thank you. After Zoe, Michael Foster, Ian Burns, and Jeff Thomas.
I would like to start what I'm saying with that I should be in school right now. I'm missing a test to do this, and my parents would rather that I be at school. I hope that this shows how important this is to me. We need the budget that Councilmember Sawant is putting forward. Like, this is being put forward because of a huge issue, the housing crisis that affects all of us. Our current administration is trying to dehumanize people, people on the streets, trying to turn them into animals. There are pets in our city getting better care and better shelter than humans. Think about this. When it gets too cold, too hot, or too smoky in our city, on the news it says to make sure that your pets are fine, that your pets have warmth and good shelter. What about the humans that are freezing, overheating, or stuck outside breathing in air with dangerous amounts of particulate matter? If about 12,500 people in Seattle are not being treated as well as pets, then we are seriously messed up as a society. Of those 12,500 people in Seattle, there are 3,500 homeless kids in the Seattle school system. We need more affordable housing in our city, and we need to treat people like people.
Thank you very much, Zoe. Thanks for coming. Michael, hold it for just a second, please. Ian Burns, and then Jeff Thomas. And then I'd like to inquire of my colleagues that we extend, and I'm going to say, let's extend till 9:20, if you are okay with that. I'm sorry, 10:20? Then we will move on to our business on the agenda. So please, go ahead, Michael.
Hi, I'm very grateful to be here. I'm actually on parole, and I'm thankful that I have the opportunity to address this body. I don't know how you do the work that you do. Money is very powerful, and we live in an incredibly unfair, inequitable place, and it's important to be able to hear the voices of people who don't have money. And it seems like this is one of the few places where you're able to do that. I know there are a lot of groups here that probably won't get to speak this morning. I'm here interested in green pathways. Young people, people of color, need a pathway to be able to make their voices heard. If we're going to change anything that's making your life as a council member difficult, green pathways is a way to do that. Someday, these problems will be solvable. I'm here to speak for housing and the crisis that seems to have only gotten worse since I went to prison. And I personally, I feel like we're polluting and starving people and pushing people out of housing and building buildings today and making problems worse for the next 30 to 50 years, and we have to think about that crisis today.
Michael, thank you.
If there were some way to raise money from all the wealthy people in this city...
Ian, Jeff Thomas, then Pauline?
Hi, I'm Ian. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative. We, I think, as Shirley said, I think housing activists should be incredibly excited that three cities in California just passed taxes on the wealthiest companies in their area. And we inspired those taxes. We did. You know, the fight that we waged here in Seattle. And so what excuse do council members have who repealed the Amazon tax to not have an alternative ready to solve the housing crisis? The housing movement has put forward three ideas, and if you have others, we'd love to hear them, but the fact remains that we can build city-owned, permanently affordable housing with union labor. We can do it. We have the ability, but we need the political will.
Pauline, did you have a group?
Well...
Okay. Pauline, you got a minute?
The ground rules weren't too clear.
Okay.
And I wanted to testify separately.
Okay, please, go ahead. One minute.
Okay, I'm Pauline Badsetas, and I'm delighted to announce, let everybody know that the salmon are spawning at Carkeek Park.
Oh, great.
People ask how to help the orcas. One, go down to Carkeek and enjoy the salmon, learn everything you can about them, because they are key to the survival of the orcas. Then go home and recycle. Don't dump anything toxic in the drains. Plant something, anything you can, a tree, a shrub, ground covers that will help combat global warming. And take transit. I can't afford personally to buy buses, but that's what the taxes are for, and so I'm asking the City Council to please support efforts between SDOT and Metro Transit and other agencies and volunteer groups that improve the transit infrastructure in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pauline. Lynden Knighton, then Aidan Nardone? And what's your name?
Linda Knighton.
Oh, okay. Linda, thank you. And then Aidan, Elizabeth, and Alec Conan. Please, go ahead.
Okay. First off, a little logic on my sign here. There usually isn't a lot of logic coming from Ballard. Some of us were together in the church meeting and know what I mean by that. And so I'd like to just start pumping forth the logic. First off, I live in SHA Housing, and we've got a problem. We've got a lot of people in this city with dementia, and I know a lot about dementia. I worked for nine years with people with it in their homes, and my dad died of it. I was walking down the hall in one of the houses that is run by SHA, and I overheard one of the managers allowing a woman in advanced dementia state to sign a legal document. That's right, it's illegal. We need a place for these people, not for the millionaire dementia ones, but everybody else. Second, we talk about tiny houses, but we have laws that say, oh, you can't have a tiny house with wheels, because you can't live in it, because it's an RV. If you look inside a tiny house, it's not an RV. It is a house. It has bathroom, it has kitchen, it has bedroom, it has plumbing, it has all the goodies, and so there's no reason to say that you can't live in it.
Thank you very much for coming. Then Elizabeth James, then Alec.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to speak about the safe consumption sites rather than putting money into safe consumption sites. Please direct the available resources, there is money, into comprehensive treatment, comprehensive wraparound services, long-term services, housing people, and getting people back and stable and having fully functional lives. And I also want to thank you for your vote last night to ratify the police contract.
Thank you for coming, Aidan. Elizabeth James, Alec Conan, Bob Cutter.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth James with Speak Out Seattle. People belong inside, they don't belong living out on the street. SOS supports that you join with the King County Board of Health and declare a public health disaster on homelessness. The San Diego County utilized tent shelters to house 1,000 people for only $4.5 million, which was all paid for by business. We can get those up before winter really sets in and save lives. I also want to thank you all. I know it was a difficult vote to vote for the police contract, but I do trust that Judge Robart will make sure that it complies with the consent decree and anything in the ordinance that's constitutional. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was Elizabeth, Alec Conan, Bob Cutter. Housing is a human right. We are ready to fight. Housing is a human right. We are ready to fight. Housing is a human right. Woo! Woo! Okay. Thanks for that. Alec Conan, Bob Cutter, Matthew Lang, and then order Alec, Bob, and Matthew.
Morning, Council. Thank you for all of your work. As I'm sure most of you are aware, last month, the world's foremost body of climate scientists, IPCC, produced a new report that was a synthesis of over 6,000 peer-reviewed scientific papers. Its conclusion was really simple, that we have an extremely short period of time in which to reduce our climate pollution, or we'll be witnessing truly vast levels of human suffering and the extinction of ecosystems within our lifetimes. That should have huge ramifications on all of the work that the Council does, including this budget. Two immediate impacts it should have on the budget is the Council should fully fund Got Green's Green Pathways Fellowship program. We need young people of color in the environmental sector to have any hope of solving the environmental crisis. And also, the Council should vote yes on Item 134, which would change a tax exemption and fully fund OSE's ability to fund a climate director position and reinstate $150,000 of necessary funding for OSE to do their work and us to achieve our climate goals as a city. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bob Cutter. I'm here to affirm what Alec just said. First, I want to thank you for supporting the Paris Accords last year, when our president stepped away from them. But now's the time to put the money where it's important. And so I want to ask you to fund the Office of Sustainability and Environment, including the Director, Item 134, as Alec mentioned, and also the Green Pathways. So, thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, before you begin, let me call the next three so they can get ready. Clara Carter, Meg Wade, and Andrew Kidd. Clara, Meg, and Andrew. You're on the floor, Matthew.
Good morning, council. My name is Matthew Lang. I'm the lead organizer at the Transit Riders Union, a small business owner and a Ballard resident. I ask that you make some final amendments to the proposed budget to create more affordable, equitable, and sustainable Seattle. The city already provides full transit benefits for city employees, including council members and their staff, as do many major employers. This best practice increases transit use and helps reduce carbon emissions. Workers at city-funded human service providers and on city-funded projects should receive the same benefit. Please take the first step in this budget by studying what it would take to make this happen. I also urge you to support the people and organizations who serve shelter and house people all over Seattle. Please add funding to adjust inflation on all human services department contracts up to 3.5%. The dedicated people who do this vital work deserve the same inflation adjustment the City of Seattle employs in the city itself. I also support the analysis of an equitable growth strategy for Seattle using the city's racial equity toolkit. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Clara Cantor, and I'm here from Seattle Neighborhood Greenways and also speaking from the Mass Coalition. I'm here to ask city council to please vote in favor of the Adaptive Signals Proviso that's been sponsored by Councilmember O'Brien. Adaptive signals have prioritized cars at the expense of people walking, and any solution to that needs to be both equitable and accessible for everyone who's trying to use our streets. Also, to please vote in favor of the Home Zone Pilot, sponsored by Councilmember Mosqueta. Home Zones are an innovative and cost-effective solution for neighborhoods lacking sidewalks and also lacking the budget to be able to build new sidewalks in the foreseeable future. There's currently a 300-year backlog on sidewalks in our city. I'd also like to thank the council members that have already voiced their support of those two provisos, or those two green sheets. And I'd also like to ask the full council to please fund Safe Routes to School. The funding that has been cut from the Safe Routes to School program would have helped children at 25 schools across Seattle walk to class safely, and we need kids in Seattle to be able to safely get to and from school without being picked up and dropped off in cars. I think I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Meg Wade. I'm with 350 Seattle and also with the Mass Coalition. We need an equitable and just budget that addresses the crises that we know that we're in, and I want to thank everyone speaking up about the housing crisis and offer support for that. I also want to address our climate crisis that we know that we're in and echo support for passing Item 134 that would fund our climate director. We need pathways for our youth to get involved in solving environmental work if we're not making the investments for there to actually be an office where they could work on those things, that, you know, those two things have to go together. So I hope that we can fund a climate director, we can fund the pathways for young youth of color to be a climate director, and that we can also do all of these things that Clara was just talking about in terms of making an equitable transportation system for those young folks as well. Please fund the Safe Routes to School. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, before you start, let me call out the next three names. After Andrew, Gordon Paddleford, Sean Butterfield, and Emily Meyer, in that order. Gordon, Sean, and Emily. Go ahead, Andrew.
Good morning. Thank you, council. My name is Andrew Kidda, and I'm with 350 Seattle and also with the Move All Seattle Sustainability Coalition. And I'm here to ask you this morning to return funding to the Safe Routes to School program from the traffic photo enforcement. As we know, traffic photo enforcement has generated considerably more revenue, excuse me, than we thought. And I think there are two ways to see that new revenue. One is to think of it as a windfall for the city, which apparently has been the primary way of viewing it. But my way of viewing it is to see that that means that the photo enforcement program in and of itself is not working. I have an embarrassing confession as a multimodal advocate, which is that I'm one of the repeat offenders at Colombian Way and Asa Mercer School. And I've been to the mitigation hearing, and I've watched the video, and I have to say, that stretch of road is incredibly wide and has very few crossroads, and there's a school right there. And I kind of wonder, like, if you actually want to solve the problem of people driving too fast by schools, you need to invest in redesigning the streets, making more crossroads, narrowing those streets. So don't think of that money as extra money for the budget, think of it as solving the problem you were initially starting to address. Thanks.
Thanks, Andrew. Gordon.
Good morning, council members. My name is Gordon Paddleford. I'm with Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, and I have the enjoyable task of thanking you for some really great things in the budget this year. So first of all, thank you for the Adaptive Signals Proviso. That's going to help allow the city to reorient our signals around our values and our priorities in making sure that we're thinking about moving people and not just vehicles. Thank you for the Adaptive Signals Proviso. Secondly, thank you for the Thomas Street Sly. That is going to ensure that we have one east-west connection between our burgeoning Southlake Union neighborhood and what I really think should be the Seattle Kraken Arena, but we'll see how that naming shakes out. And then third, the Home Zone Pilot is going to help with neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks to make those neighborhoods a lot safer to walk in a lot sooner. So that's a really exciting idea, and I'm really glad that the council is directing SDOT to innovate in a new way so that we can make our city safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Sean.
Hello. Hi. My name is Sean Butterfield. I work for Blood Brooks Northwest, which is our regional blood center. I just wanted to share a couple of stories with you. A couple of years ago, or almost a couple of years ago, I was hurt at work. I broke my leg pretty badly, and I, in addition to working for the blood center, I take care of my disabled fiancee. We have the fortune of living in affordable housing in Seattle on Capitol Hill, which is amazing, but many of our unhoused neighbors don't have that opportunity, and as you know, rents are increasing at a rapid rate. So I was hurt, and I invited a family friend of mine to come and take care of me and my fiancee while I was recovering. And that was almost two years ago, and just this week only took him that long to be able to find a place that he could live. I ended up taking in his brother, who was suffering, you know, from death in the family, and it took them an enormous amount of time to be able to get full-time jobs here, and then now there's three adults there living in a tiny house. I also wanted to share one other issue about the blood center in particular. There are some folks who live behind the dumpsters, or not live, but occasionally sleep behind the dumpsters.
I need you to wrap up.
I understand. And I just wanted to point out the absurdity of the kind of reaction that the city of Seattle has to the homeless population. Because some people were found sleeping behind the dumpsters at the blood center, we now have a 12-foot-high razor wire fence guarding the biohazard shed where we dispose of our biohazard waste. This is insane. This is not how we should treat our unhoused neighbors, and I want to support.
Thank you. I asked you to wrap up, sir. That's wrapping up. Thank you very much, sir.
Please pass more money for affordable housing.
Emily Meyer, Susan Romano, and Azizi Jeffs. Emily, Susan, Azizi.
Yes, hi, thank you. I want to thank the council for extending our time. My name is Emily Myers. I am a labor leader with UAW 4121 and a brain scientist at the University of Washington. We are here representing UAW 4121 today, which has 5,500 graduate student teachers, research assistants, and postdoctoral researchers at the University of Washington. We are a world-class research institution where we have 70% of the contact hours with the students at the University of Washington. That is who we are as a union. And the University of Washington barely pays us enough to live in this city, and they build us housing and the undergrads' housing that is unaffordable and is more expensive than the market rate, and then they expect us to be able to live and work in this city. And so we are here to ask the city council to approve a budget that represents our values and our values of affordable housing and having an equitable city.
Go ahead and start the time, Lynda. Lynda, go ahead and start the time, dear, because she's going to sit here and chant that part of her time.
Hi, I'm Sarah Romano. I am a member of UAW 4121 also. I am a doctoral student in public health. So this is equitable, or equity is an issue that's really important and close to my heart. So I'm just here to represent or ask for affordable housing and support that effort.
Hi, my name is Amzai Jeffs. I'm a renter here in Seattle, a graduate student in math at UAW, and I'm here with the folks from UAW 4121. I want to ask that you all amend the budget so that it reflects the housing needs of people in Seattle. It's that simple. We need to prioritize affordable housing so that my peers and I can do our work without having to move every single year to avoid increasing rents, so that workers in Seattle can live with dignity. I'm lucky enough to have a fellowship that means I make more than 40% more than most graduate students, and I still pay half of that income in rent. Affordable housing isn't a huge request. The money isn't even hard to find. We had a tax earlier this year that would have provided funding for it, but that was repealed. On the other hand, we recently saw in California and in Portland, people passed bonds and taxes to fund housing. They see how important this is, but we in Seattle are doing hardly anything. We need to change this, and we can do that right now with this budget. We can fund affordable housing. This isn't a radical demand. It's common sense, and it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me, I think you all might be in order, but let me make sure that was Mr. Jeff. So we got Tejas Dovanur, Shua Sanchez, and Lea Perler Mutter. And I apologize for my mispronouncing names. So we have Tejas, Shua, and Lea.
Hi, so I'm here representing academic student employees at UAW. And I study mathematics.
What is your name? I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
I study mathematics, but you really don't need to be a mathematician to realize, to recognize the extreme inequality that pervades Seattle, which has the richest, obscenely rich people who live here, and also thousands of homeless people sleeping outside in the cold nights. I call on you all to stop being bullied by predatory big business and support the regular people out there who are struggling in this society. I call on you to deal with the housing crisis by fully funding permanent affordable housing for all people in Seattle. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Shua, Sanchez, Lea, Claire.
My name's Lea Pearl Mutter.
And did we have Shua?
Oh, we're going out of order.
Oh, okay. Whatever.
My name's Lea Pearl Mutter. I'm a renter, a labor activist, and a graduate student in computer science and engineering at UAW. As a computer scientist, I make more than most grad students at UAW, and I still pay almost 40% of my income for rent in a modest apartment with a roommate. So despite being rent burdened, I'm considered well-off compared to many of my fellow grad students and thousands of other people in this city. Furthermore, there are thousands more people living in the city who don't have any housing at all. The city must fund affordable housing now and stop caving in to the pressure from big businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Okay.
Shua Sanchez.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Shua, not Shua.
Right.
Got it, Shua. Thank you.
All good. I'm just going to wait till my representative, Rob Johnson, is ready to hear my statement. You good? Yeah? Don't mean to rush you, just focused on you over here. So I'm Shua Sanchez. I am a physicist at the University of Washington. I'm also an executive board member of UAW 4121, which, like we said, represents 5,500 people. In the past year, we did a huge survey of membership of our union, had over 2,500 people do the survey, and what we found is that over 80% of people in our union are rent burdened, living here. And over half of our people, Rob, are living in your district, and I actually have been your neighbor for a few years. Every year that I've lived in your district, my rent's gone up by $100-ish, and not because it's increasing the quality of the apartment or something like that, but just because they can, you know? So this is the number-one issue for the people in our union, and it's the number-one thing that we're going to be organizing over in the next year.
Thank you, Shua.
Something to consider.
Thank you for coming. Okay, we have Claire Martini, and then I think Catherine, and that's going to take us darn close to 10:20, as we've agreed. So, Claire?
Wonderful. Good morning, council members. My name is Claire Martini. I'm a policy manager with Cascade Bicycle Club here today to advocate for some specific things in the transportation budget, as well as to support the goals and priorities of the Mass Coalition. We've heard today a number of ways that our growing city is in crisis, and I think transportation has an important role to play in how more people and more types of people can make the city their home. Specifically, I wanted to thank council members for their support of the Adaptive Signal Proviso, for the Home Zone Pilot, and the Thomas Street Greenway Sly, as well as to urge you to reconsider the cuts to Safe Routes to School. That's a really important program that helps our next generation of Seattleites learn how to navigate our streets safely. We have a choice as a city. We can build for traffic, or we can build for people. And when we prioritize biking, walking, and transit, we're choosing people and a more livable future for our city. So thank you for your time and your hard work on the budget.
Great. Thank you, Claire. Catherine? Catherine? Maria Badiola? And Maria's going to be our last speaker.
Thank you so much, everybody. Totally didn't expect to be able to testify. I was writing an email to you all. But number one, thank you, thank you so much, Councilwoman Teresa Mosqueta, Bruce Harrell, and Mike O'Brien for co-sponsoring the Beacon Hill Air and Noise Study. Messages from Southeast Quieter Skies Seattle. When Greener Skies was put in place, it was supposed to increase flights by 2.5%, and it actually increased flights by about 20% plus. So we really thank you. Please keep us in the budget, and please vote unanimously for this Beacon Hill Air and Noise Pollution Study, and we will report back to you and steward the cross-cultural linguistically competent community engagement. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Maria, for your leadership on that, too. Okay, we are going to move into our meeting. The meeting that we are about to engage in is going to have many parts, and I'm going to ask my council colleagues to help me through this this morning. Eric's going to explain the voting process, but all of you have received this sheet, which is blue, pink, and green this morning. I'm hoping that we're going to get through the blue part. We are going to break at 11:45. A number of all of us up here have been asked to go to a noon event, and we will break at 11:45, and I'm going to ask Amelia if you'll keep your eye on the time for me as well. So the first bit that we're going to go through will be the consent package, but there are some additions before we get there to the agenda today. And we'll move through this in order of the blue items, the consent package. Those are Agenda Items 1 through 105 in your notebooks. Then if you have items that you want to remove from that consent package, I'm going to ask you to identify them after Eric has read through all of the consent package items. So he will identify the agenda number, read the title only, and after he has read all those in, then you will have an opportunity to pull items from that if you want to speak to them specifically. Then we will go through those items that have been removed from the consent package after we vote on the consent package itself, and then we will consider the individual votes on other items. And those other items, some are items proposed for substitution, some are non-competing items that are self-budgeting within our green sheets that we proposed last week, and then there are this group called competing items. And what that means is that we may all want the outcomes, but we simply don't have sufficient resources within the identified sources in order to go through them all. Now, if you... Now, if you want to pull something from our consent package, you don't need a second. You can just raise your hand, move to pull it, and that will be done. When we get to the competing items or even the items that are proposed for substitution, we need a second. So I will move those that I believe have majority support, and then otherwise I can let the sponsor make the motion. Before we get going, once again, I want to say thank you to Council Central staff, all of you in the front rows over here. You have been amazing, working long nights, working weekends. I just really respect you all individually and collectively. Kirsten, thank you for your leadership of this group. Lisa, Patty, and Eric at the table, I know that you have been walking all of us through. You've been in offices, you've been working with our staff, and I really appreciate that. So I think right now, thank you. Thank you very much. So as you have all heard me say, my goals for this budget have been very action-oriented. I've preferred to put money into the doing rather than continuing with plans that, or studies that may have already been done in the past. If we need data, of course, we will collect that data, but if we can build on what we've already done and get our investments working, that's where I am going. And also, you've heard me talk about having a systems approach. As we're talking about low acuity as an example, the low acuity efforts for first responders, I've been working with our fire department, with our police. The goal there is one to improve the system so that we're not throwing people back out on the street without a plan, without getting the case management and housing that they need. So again, I appreciate all the hard work we've done so far. Today's going to be, I hope, as organized as possible. So before we consider today's agenda, I do also want to say, remember that our folks over here, Patty's going to be tallying responses, so raise your hand or make eye contact with him if there's something you want to pull or there's something that you're going to want to say. Just make sure that he sees you. So now we're going to move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I'm going to move to adopt the proposed agenda for today's meeting, if I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so are there any amendments at this point? Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Bagshaw. I'd like to amend the agenda by adding Green Sheet 30-4-C-1, Restoration of Funding to Support a Climate Director Position, and ask that this be added after Green Sheet 30-4-B-1, which is item number 134 on the agenda, which is titled Rejection of BNO Tax Deduction for Life Science Research.
Okay, and as I understand, that this is an alternative?
This is an alternative. We will try the first route, and if that doesn't work, this will be my second path.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you have an add at this point to the agenda?
Yes.
I thought you might.
I think I do. I'm going to say words. I, what am I doing? I'm adding Green Sheet 388A1.
Okay.
So I moved to do that.
Okay, second. All right, is there anything else on the agenda? Any other adds at this point?
So I didn't get a second on mine, and I don't know if we're going to vote on them all.
I'm seconding, yeah.
Just vote on them all together? Is that the goal?
Okay, so, thank you. So we're doing individual votes. So I have seconded Councilmember O'Brien's motion to add 30-4-C-1 after Agenda Item 134. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. None opposed? Okay, and then Councilmember Gonzalez, what is your number?
I am moving to add Green Sheet 388A1 to the agenda.
Okay, and this we will get to, I believe, in the second part of this agenda, and this moves to add the, what is it, $90 million?
Forty in 2019 and fifty in 2020 to fund the SPOG contract.
Okay, so moved and seconded to add this to the agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Are those the only two agenda additions that we have? All right, then I'm going to move to adopt the agenda as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pardon me? Any opposed?
Excuse me.
Oh, I get a lot ahead of you.
Does Councilmember Mosqueta have a, no.
No? Oh, do I? I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
That's all right. Well, if we need to down the road, we can amend it further.
Apologies for the presumption there.
Okay. So then I guess, Eric, we're going to move on to our first items of business. If you would like to explain about the
Madam Chair.
Consent package, yes. Councilmember Mosqueta?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I don't have something to add to the agenda since there was an awkward pause there. Do you mind if we just acknowledge Labor's 242 in the back? Because they are here for National Apprenticeship Week, and I know apprenticeship programs are important to you and this whole council, so I thought I'd just use that chance.
Very nice. Dale Bright, thank you for being here, your team. Very good to see you, and thank you all for testifying. And I appreciate your back-on-track signs that they're all right-side up now.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. Details. All right, so again, Eric, I think we've got, we're up to date where we're supposed to be at this moment. Amelia is giving me the head nod, which always makes me happy. So if you will read through, and again, council colleagues, we're going to let Eric get the agenda item and the title read in. If there's something that you want to pull, you can signal Patty just by raising your hand, and I will come back to you. Okay? Everybody good? All right, and Eric, thank you.
Yes, you can signal a motion to remove an item for individual consideration at any point as we're going through. Just please make sure you've caught the attention of someone at this table.
Okay, very good. But we're not going to ask people to speak to it until you've gotten everything in.
So item number one is Green Sheet 1-1A3, which makes corrections. This is the CBO Arata makes a number of corrections in the budget in the CIP. Item number two is Green Sheet 1-2A1. This recognizes the results of the October revenue forecast update and acknowledges that in the balancing sheet for the budget. Green Sheet 1-4A2 recommends passage of Council Bill 119376, amending the uses of the sweetened beverage tax proceeds. This reduces the dedication to the one-time category of expenditures in that ordinance to 10% from 20%. Green Sheet 1-982 recommends passage of Council Bill 119406, which suspends the 20% red light camera revenue contribution to the School Safety, Traffic, and Pedestrian Improvement Fund for a three-year period only, 2018 to 2020.
Chair.
Thanks. Chair, Bagshaw? Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry. Is it okay if we speak to some of these items?
What we're doing, Councilmember Herbold, I'm going to have him read them in, and then if there's one you want to speak to, please raise your hand, identify the number, we'll come back at the end. But he's got to get these all in first.
Okay, so you want me to identify it now?
Please.
Okay, great.
Or just raise your hand. Patty will get the number.
I'm interested in speaking to
Which?
The green sheet that would amend the ordinance as it relates to the red light camera revenue.
Got it. 1982, 1982, okay.
I'm also interested in speaking to it. I'm not proposing to pull it out, but when we get to the end of this, come back and talk about it.
Very good.
Before we vote on the consent package.
May I ask if Councilmember Herbold's intention is to pull it out for an individual vote? No, just to speak.
Okay.
All right. Item number five is Green Sheet 1-10B2. This applies a reduction across all general fund appropriations for various departments in 2019 and 2020. It's about $700,000, or rather, $900,000 in 2019 and about $1.4 million in 2020. Departments will have the flexibility to implement those reductions as they see fit. Green Sheet 2-182 appropriates $25,000 in 2019 to the Arts Commission, sorry, the Office of Arts and Culture, showing my age there, to support racial equity alignment of its programming. Green Sheet 2-2A2 appropriate $75,000 in both 2019 and 2020, $75,000 each to support an African-American museum. Green Sheet 3-1A3 appropriates $253,000 and change for the Office of City Auditor to complete a year-two report on the secure scheduling ordinance. Thank you. Item number nine is Green Sheet 4-2A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119379, which authorizes an inter-fund loan to Seattle Center. This provides some financing for the period during which the Coliseum will be redeveloped. Green Sheet 4-3A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119382, the Seattle Center Fee Ordinance. So this is for facility rental fees and such, updates those. Green Sheet 4-4A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119381, the Seattle Center Parking Charge Ordinance. So this is for the parking, paid parking facilities at Seattle Center. Item number 12 is Green Sheet 9-1A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119378, revising Neighborhood Matching Fund Guidelines. Item number 13 is Green Sheet 92A2. This appropriates about $138,000, $139,000 per year and provides position authority for a strategic advisor, one position in the Department of Neighborhoods to coordinate Seattle's response to the 2020 census process. Item number 14 is Green Sheet 9-3C1 appropriates $250,000 general fund to the Department of Neighborhoods for Historic Preservation Seat Funding. Item 15 is Green Sheet 10-1B1, which appropriates, or rather, provides position of authority for three part-time positions in the Department of Parks and Recreation to have extended hours at Magnuson Park. Green Sheet, or rather, item 16 is Green Sheet 10-2C1 appropriates $150,000 in 2020 for the Department of Parks and Recreation to fund the operation of additional waiting pools. Green Sheet 10-3A2 appropriates $40,000 in each year in the Department of Parks and Recreation to be offset by fees collected for an additional period of operation for Coleman Pool, a four-week period of operations. Green Sheet 10-7B1 appropriates $470,000 of King County Parks Levy funding in 2019 for the Department of Parks and Recreation for Yessler Crescent improvements. Item 19, Green Sheet 10-8A1 amends the CIP project, that is, the document that outlines the funding sources, planned spending, and parameters for a capital project, in this case DPR's Lake City Community Center project, and also the Community Center Rehabilitation and Development Project. Green Sheet 10-9A1 amends the CIP project page, another CIP project adjustment for the South Park Campus Improvements Project. Green Sheet 10-10A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119383, the Parks Fee Ordinance. Green Sheet 1011A1 recommends due pass Council Bill 119375, authorizing an amendment to the inter-local agreement between the City of Seattle and the Seattle Park District regarding the retention of interest earnings on park districts funds that are paid to the city. Green Sheet 10-13B1 appropriates $150,000 of King County Levy funding in the Department of Parks and Recreation for performance evaluation of the Capital Planning and Development Division. Green Sheet 10-14A1 amends the CIP project page for the Department of Parks and Recreation's Magnuson Park Athletic Field 12 Conversion Project. It accelerates that project by two years. Green Sheet 10-16A1 amends the CIP project for Parks and Recreation, Green Lake Community Center, and Evans Pool Replacement Project. Green Sheet 10-17A1 appropriates $70,000 of King County Levy funding in 2019 and again in 2020 to fund activation at City Hall Park just down the way. Green Sheet 10-18A1 appropriates $130,000 of Park District funding in 2019 and again in 2020 to fund Park Ambassadors at Ballard Commons Park. Green Sheet 10-19A1 cuts $70,000 general fund appropriation in the Department of Parks and Recreation and eliminates that funding for the purchase of a new vehicle for bathroom maintenance. Green Sheet 12-1A2 adds $107,000 general fund in 2019 and $139,000 in 2020, and provides position authority for a full-time strategic advisor in the, this is the Department of Finance and Administrative Services, and this is for priority hire and contract compliance management. Green Sheet 12-4A2 recommends amendment and passage of Council Bill 119385 related to fees collected at the Seattle Animal Shelter. Green Sheet 12-5B2 appropriates $100,000 a general fund in 2019 to plan and begin modifications required for a childcare center in the general downtown Seattle, City of Seattle campus area, and creates a new CIP project for that. Green Sheet 12-8A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119384, which increases certain regulatory fees administered by the Department of Finance and Administrative Services. Green Sheet 12-10A2 reduces appropriations for the Department of Finance and Administrative Services by $208,000 general fund in 2019 and amends a capital improvement project. This is the Pet Point Computer System. Green Sheet 12-20A2 recommends amendment and adoption as amended of Resolution 31847, which establishes policies for the management of the Judgment and Claims Fund. Green Sheet 12-21A2 appropriates $220,000 general fund for Finance Administrative Services to fund civil attorney positions to work with the King County Department of Public Defense's Representation of Seattle Municipal Court Indigent Defendants. Green Sheet 13-2A2 reduces appropriations by $115,000 general fund in 2019 and $120,000 general fund in 2020 from the Seattle Fire Department's budget. Green Sheet 13-4B1 appropriates $100,000 general fund for Finance General Reserve to support a potential central area community preservation and development authority yet to be established. Green Sheet 13-40A3 appropriates $475,000 general fund to Finance General to establish reserves to support a mobile integrated health response team in the Fire Department. Green Sheet 14-1B1 appropriates $100,000 general fund in 2019 for the Human Services Department for support for a community health engagement location and imposes a proviso on that funding. Green Sheet 14-3B1 appropriates $500,000 general fund in 2019 and again in 2020 for the Human Services Department for substance abuse disorder treatment contracts. Green Sheet 14-4B1 appropriates $100,000 general fund in 2019 for Human Services Department for capital costs for a public health clinic remodel. Green Sheet 14-5B1 adds $250,000 general fund in 2019, $403,000 general fund in 2020 for the Human Services Department to support a first responder triage program. Green Sheet 14-13A2 adds $180,000 general fund in 2019 and $180,000 general fund in 2020 to support services for LGBTQ seniors. Green Sheet 14-16A2 appropriates $150,000 per year for the Human Services Department to provide legal services for sexual assault survivors. Green Sheet 14-95A4 imposes a proviso on navigation team appropriations in the Human Services Department. I believe that Green Sheet 14-99B1 adds $460,000 general fund in 2019 and $750,000 general fund in 2020 for the Human Services Department to support a contract with the law enforcement, a law enforcement diversion program. Green Sheet 15-1A2 appropriates $79,000 general fund in 2019 for homelessness mental health outreach services. Green Sheet 15-2A2 adds $55,000 in each year general fund for homelessness outreach programming. Green Sheet 15-4B1 appropriates $80,000 general fund in 2019 for the Human Services Department for homelessness navigation services. Green Sheet 15-6A2 adds $100,000 in each year for the Human Services Department to support homelessness day center operations. Green Sheet 15, sorry, 15-7B1 appropriates $275,000 in 2019 and $300,000 general fund in 2020 for homelessness prevention services. Green Sheet 15-8A2 appropriates $378,000 general fund in 2019 and $756,000 general fund in 2020 for basic shelter services. Green Sheet 15-2A2 appropriates $44,400 general fund in each year for the Human Services Department to support hand washing stations. Sorry, that's 1512A2. Stand corrected. Item number 54, Green Sheet 15-13B1 appropriates $140,000 general fund in each year for Human Services to support a health and environmental investigator. Green Sheet 18
1A1.
1A1 reduces appropriations Green Sheet 18, 1A1 reduces appropriations to the Law Department or Office of the City Attorney by a little less than $28,000 to adjust the full-year position cost to nine months' position cost to represent an expected delay in hiring, or rather reflect that. Item number 56 is Green Sheet 21-1B1 which appropriates $12,000 per year general fund to the Office of Civil Rights to fund support for Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrations and imposes a proviso on that funding. Item 57. Green Sheet 21-5A1 appropriates $61,000 general fund and $139,000 general fund in 2020, provides position authority for one full-time position in the Office of Civil Rights to make permanent and equitable funding position. Green Sheet 21-9B1 appropriates $1,080,000 general fund in 2020 for the Office of Civil Rights for community-based organizations providing alternatives to or addressing harm created by the criminal justice system. Green Sheet 22-1B1 establishes a proviso on $185,000 of appropriations at the Office of Economic Development for the Transgender Economic Empowerment Program. Green Sheet 22-2A2 appropriates $110,000 in 2019 general fund and $60,000 in 2020, again, general fund for the Office of Economic Development for a legacy business designation Green Sheet 23-1B1 reduces general fund appropriations for the Office of the Employee Obtained, the new department, in 2019 by a little less than $54,000 and adds a proviso that reflects delays in startup costs. Green Sheet 24-4B1 appropriates $20,000 per year from fund balance for the Office of Housing to conduct outreach and engagement efforts for low-income, underserved communities. Green Sheet 24-6B1 appropriates $200,000 general fund in each year from the general fund for the Office of Housing to fund the Home and Hope Program. Green Sheet 21-1A2 appropriates $205,000 general fund in each year for the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs for the Legal Defense, rather, Legal Defense Network. Green Sheet 29-2B2 appropriates $1 million of community development block grant funds for the Office of Planning and Community Development and adds a proviso to ensure a total of $5.43 million of equitable development initiative grant funding and moves $1 million to general fund between two sections in the Human Services Department and reduces CDBG funding and HSD by $1 million to balance it out. That was a lot. Green Sheet 30-1A1 appropriates $50,000 general fund in 2019 and $117,000 in 2020 and authorizes one full-time Equity and Environment Initiative Program Coordinator position in the Office of Sustainability in the Environment. Green Sheet 30-2B1 appropriates $100,000 general fund per year in the Office of Sustainability in the Environment to fund a Green Pathways Fellowship Program for community-based organizations. Green Sheet 30-3A1 appropriates $158,611 general fund in 2019 for the Office of Sustainability in the Environment for Beacon Hill Air and Noise Pollution Study. Green Sheet 30-4A1 reduces Office of Sustainability and Environment general fund support by $150,000 in 2019 and again in 2020. Green Sheet 32-1A1, or rather, 1A2 recommends amendment and passage as amended of Council Bill 119349 which amends the rates, terms, and conditions for the use and sale of electricity by Seattle City Light. Green Sheet 32-2A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119394 which authorizes Seattle City Light to issue $255 million in revenue bonds. Green Sheet 32-4A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119350 amending the provisions for Seattle City Light's net wholesale revenue targets for 2019 and 2020. Green Sheet 33-1B2 establishes a proviso on $85,000 of funding in the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections for codevelopment staffing, reserving those for council-identified priorities.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that this item be removed for an individual vote.
Okay. Thank you, Will.
That was item 73, Green Sheet 33-1B2 related to a proviso for codevelopment staffing in the Department of Construction and Inspection.
That's right. Thank you. Patty's got it. Thanks.
Thank you for the icebreaker. Green Sheet 33-2A2 appropriates $403,000 and authorizes five full-time positions in the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections to restore staffing to improve permit review times and requests quarterly reporting on performance metrics. Green Sheet 33-3A1 appropriates $101,000 in 2019 and $136,000 in 2020 for the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections for one full-time senior environmental analyst position to enhance staffing for tree reviews. Which brings us to item 76, or 76, Green Sheet 33-4A2. This reduces general fund appropriations by $615,000 in 2019 and again in 2020 from the Human Services Department budget and moves that funding over at a slightly higher level, $746,000 in 2019 and $747,000 in 2020 to the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections and adds position authority in SDCI. This basically moves tenant outreach services programming from Human Services Department to SDCI. Item 77 is Green Sheet 33-8E2 which recommends amendment and passage of Council Bill 119386, Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections Fee Ordinance. It also authorizes three full-time inspectors and appropriates $457,000 in 2019 and $483,000 in 2020 from SDCI fund balance to expand the vacant building monitoring program.
Madam Chair, I'd ask that this item, Green Sheet 33-8E2, be removed and considered for an individual vote. This is 77, the SDCI Fee Ordinance and appropriate expenditures associated with the expansion of the vacant building monitor program. To give a heads up to staff, I'll also ask for 79, which is the bill that implements the vacant building monitoring program proposed in this appropriations bill.
Thank you.
So, item 78 is Green Sheet 33-9A1 which recommends passage of Council Bill 119387 which is SDCI's Rental Registration and Inspection Ordinance Fee Legislation. Updates those fees. Green Sheet 33-1B1 is item number 79. Sorry, that's 33-11B1 which recommends passage of Council Bill 119407 which directs enhancements to the vacant building monitoring program.
Madam Chair, again, just to reinforce, I'd like to ask that this be removed for an individual vote. Item 79, Green Sheet 33-11B1 related to the expansion of the vacant building monitoring program.
So, we've got that. Councilmember Johnson, 77, 79, and 73.
Item 80 is Green Sheet 35-1A3 which establishes a proviso on Seattle Department of Transportation or SDOT spending on adaptive signal controls. Item 81 is Green Sheet 35-2A2 establishing a proviso on SDOT spending on Ballard Bridge pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements. Green Sheet 35-5B1 establishes a proviso on SDOT spending for the Downtown Transportation Alliance Partnership. Green Sheet 35-8A2 appropriates $10,000 for SDOT to support the installation of suicide prevention hotline signs at locations including but not limited to 20th Avenue Northeast Bridge. Green Sheet 35-9A3 appropriates $50,000 for SDOT for a Third Avenue configuration study. Green Sheet 35-10A2 appropriates $500,000 in 2020 for Seattle Department of Transportation for the Neighborhood Parks Street Fund, and this is the Your Voice, Your Choice CIP Item 86 is Green Sheet 35-11A2. It appropriates $500,000 in 2020 for Seattle Department of Transportation to fund Phase III of the Rainier Safety Project in the Vision Zero CIP Project. Green Sheet 35-12A2 appropriates $350,000 for SDOT for the Home Zone Pilot Program. Green Sheet 35-14A2 appropriates $250,000 for SDOT for urban freight mobility and alley congestion reduction efforts. Green Sheet 35-17A2 establishes a new 35th Avenue Southwest paving project in the proposed 2019-24 CIP for SDOT. Green Sheet 35-20A1 adds a new CIP project, again, for SDOT for the Highland Park Roundabout Project and amends the CIP project page for the current Vision Zero Project. Green Sheet 35-21-A1 provisos SDOT spending on streetcar operations requiring some reporting. Green Sheet 35-22A1 establishes a proviso on SDOT spending on the construction of the Center City Streetcar Connector Project. Green Sheet 35-25A1 uses $3.5 million of Seattle Transportation Benefit District fund balance and swaps some funding sources around in SDOT's Transit Quarter Improvements and arterial major maintenance CIP projects. Freeze up some funding. Green Sheet 35-3A2 recommends amendment and passage of Council Bill 119388 which would update SDOT's street use permit fee schedule. Green Sheet 35-3A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119380 to extend the inter-fund loan for the Seattle Streetcar Operations Fund. This is some prior expenses related to the operation of the South of Union Streetcar. Green Sheet 35-32A2 recommends passage of Council Bill 119401 which establishes conditions for SDOT's grant applications in 2019. Green Sheet 36-2A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119389, the Seattle Fire Department's 2019 Fee Ordinance. Green Sheet 37-2A1 produces general fund appropriations by $23,544 in 2019 and a similar amount in 2020 and switches out an SA1, that's a Strategic Advisor I, employment position in place of the proposed Strategic Advisor III position, and that is all in the Seattle Municipal Court's Court Resource Center program. Green Sheet 38-1A2 appropriates $37,500 general fund for the Seattle Police Department in 2019 to retain the South Park Public Safety Coordinator. Green Sheet 38-4A2 appropriates $25,000 for the Seattle Information Technology in 2019 to fund a business analyst to support the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. Green Sheet 35-5A2 establishes a proviso on spending related to community service officer or CSO program in the Seattle Police Department. Green Sheet 38-7B1 reduces general fund appropriations by $1.365 million in 2019 and $1 million in 2020 to reflect salary savings based on staffing projections. Green Sheet 40-2A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119395, the Seattle Public Utilities Drainage and Wastewater System Bond Ordinance. Green Sheet 40-3A2 recommends passage of Council Bill 119396, the SPU Water System Bond Ordinance, and Green Sheet 40-4A1 recommends passage of Council Bill 119397 which authorizes refunds, or bond refunding, to realize savings of existing SPU water system bonds.
Well, congratulations.
Yes. All of those items were in your chair's balancing package and none were identified as of yesterday as targets of proposed substitutions, and so that is why they were included in this consent package.
Thank you. And in addition to the items 73, 77, and 79 that Councilmember Johnson has identified, are there others that people would like to pull and discuss? Okay. Well, I think then we turn it to, first I have to adopt the package minus those three. Councilmembers want?
I would like to speak on the package before we move to the next agenda.
Okay, so I need to move to adopt the, what have you got, Patty?
I believe before we move, there were items removed, but I believe that Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember O'Brien wanted to speak to item four, which is Green Sheet 19A2.
Speak to the package.
Oh, okay, but it's speaking to the red light camera issue, it's not pulling the item itself.
Not pulling, but just speaking to it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, well, then I'm going to move to adopt these items 1 through 105 minus 73, 77, 79. Red light camera, we would talk about separately, but it doesn't impact the package. So, can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Those in favor of adopting items 1 through 105 minus 73, 77, and 79, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I think Patty wants our hands raised.
Oh.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
We got that one.
Okay, very good.
You made it easy.
Thank you. Then, comments, we're going to start with, oh.
Oh, sorry.
You are still voting?
I was distracted and still had my hand off.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'm loving this group. Thank you. Councilmember Johnson, would you like to start with item 73? And then, just to clarify, what, do you want the red light camera first?
Number four first.
Okay. Red light camera first, and then Councilmember Swan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, I just wanted to speak to the commitment that this budget makes for not just this year, but I believe the following two years. And I want to remind this council that in 2016, two budget cycles ago, this council voted on the legislation that requires us to earmark 20% of our revenue from red light cameras to traffic safety programs. I sponsored that green sheet. It was Green Sheet 44-1B2, and it directed that 20% of the red light camera revenue go to School Safety Traffic and Pedestrian Improvement Fund. This was done because it is considered to be National Highway Safety Administration best practices to devote funds associated with automated camera enforcement to projects that enhance safety. Often, when you have those funds going into the general fund, there is greater resistance to automated camera enforcement programs, but when people can see that those dollars are actually being used to make the streets safer, they are much more accepting and supportive of those programs. And we have, as one of our legislative priorities this year, going to Olympia and asking them to, again, adopt legislation that would expand automated camera enforcement to bus lanes, bus-only lanes, and carpool lanes. And I think we need to do something to express our commitment to using those funds in a way that will bolster support in Olympia for this legislation. So, I would like to signal, even though I'm not motioning to remove this, I would like to signal today my intention to reexamine this as a policy issue next year and take another look at it next year in next year's budget.
Very good. Thank you very much for that. Councilmember O'Brien?
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Herbold, I really appreciate the comments you made there and your work on this in the past, and I agree with everything you've said. I'll just add to that, that the, you know, when the city as a policy creates fees, fines, taxes, tickets, whatever, intended to change behavior, I think it's really important that the revenue from that is dedicated to also changing that behavior. We heard in public comment today about a gentleman who acknowledged that he had received a few tickets themselves, but really said, you know, if you want to fix the behavior, you really need to redesign that street or that intersection so it's safer and we won't violate it. The goal here with this or a host of other things that we do, we've talked at length about sugar beverage tax and other things in the budget process too, is that we don't collect a penny of it because people are no longer doing that behavior. And so, it has, it's important that we discourage it by having a penalty for doing it, and that's what this does. And I think it's also critically important that we take that penalty and reinvest it to avoid that behavior on the other end. Similar to Councilmember Herbold, I can't find a way to undo that in this budget. I think it's a little unfortunate that it's at the end of a two-month process where we're talking about what I think is a really important policy decision, but I also understand that it's a complicated and challenging budget, and it is what it is. I would like to bring back some legislation once we're through the budget to reexamine how we dedicate our red light cam- how we dedicate our red light camera. This budget proposal is for 2018, for 2019 and 2020. I think 2019, well, 2018 is almost over, 2019 we're about to approve with the proposed budget for 2020, but I would be interested in exploring making changes for 2020, actually going forward. I think a significant portion, perhaps more than 20%, should go, and I would propose more broadly to Vision Zero projects across the city. And I think it's really important, not just to send a signal to folks in our city and in the state legislature, but because I think it's a principle that's critically important.
Great, Councilmember O'Brien, Councilmember Herbold, thank you both, and I'm just gonna pile on for one more second, and that is, Councilmember Johnson had been saying that he still has the scars on his back from trying to hold on to this policy, but at the same time raise more money for the Vision Zero projects, and I support you in that, I want to work with this on it, and I really want to signal to SDOT that the goal of having a more pedestrian-friendly, more of a bicycle and whatever new vehicles we have friendly, making us all safer, is going to help us move through this time of maximum constraint downtown, the congestion. And from a personal standpoint, and I'm really saying, please SDOT, the bicycle lanes that we have are good, but we've got to make those connections, and I say from a personal standpoint, you know, I ride my bike, it's dark outside, I'm lit up like a Christmas tree when I ride, but I came within five feet of being hit three nights ago and two inches of being hit last night, and I'm where I'm supposed to be, at the time I'm supposed to be, it's not acceptable for us to have bicycle lanes that just end. So I'm with you, I'm off the soapbox, thank you for this, but the policy is really important.
I can just add, in the next couple of weeks, we're expecting to receive a proposal for moving forward on the Move Seattle levy from the executive, and I think that conversation includes a series of investments also and some safety measures, and so I may want to roll this conversation, this policy discussion into that, we'll have to discuss what committee makes sense for the red light cameras to go through, but I'm certainly committed to do that and I'm open to taking that in my committee if that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments on that issue? Councilmember Johnson?
Just briefly, I want to, because I think this has gotten lost in the shuffle a little bit, I want to remind folks that they're kind of two different funds here, you know, so we've got school traffic cameras that catch you when you're speeding by a school, and we dedicate 100% of those revenues towards safe routes to school projects, and that was also part of the budget discussions that we had in 2016. And there's a separate fund, the red light camera fund, where we have historically dedicated for the last couple of years, 20% of those dollars to school safety projects. For better or for worse, more people have been speeding in the city, so both of those numbers went up, and the number of projects that we were anticipating building with the 20% from red light camera funds are going to be built with the increase in funds from the school traffic safety camera fund. So we are still building the same number of projects, because for, again, better or for worse, we've got more people that are speeding through the neighborhood, so I don't want people to feel like we're not going to get the same number of school safety projects that we had already planned on in 2019, because we are. I completely agree with Councilmembers O'Brien and Herbold that this is worth us having a policy discussion about as we contemplate a 2020 issue, but we're just in the, I think, the budgeting process right now that we all have to go through, which is how do you reconcile competing priorities, and I think that this approach that we've taken is a prudent one for now.
Good, thank you for that.
And I'll just, oh, I add, for better or for worse, I just say for worse.
We have more money, but it's for worse. Okay, anything else on red light cameras? Councilmember Swant?
Thank you, I wanted to speak to the consent package in general and also share with the public what this consent package means is, it's the package of amendments to the mayor's proposed budget that generally there is agreement on the council over, so I wanted to talk about that briefly, but I wanted to start by acknowledging the members of the public and members of the People's Budget Movement who came today and have fought all along. Thanks to everyone who's been active in the movement this year, and obviously thanks goes to everybody, but I do feel like it's important to give special recognition to some people who came today and have been part of the movement and have played a very special role. One is Zoe Sherman, who's a high school student who said she had a test today and yet came here, and I appreciate her parents agreeing with us that this is an important political task for her to do. I also wanted to thank the members of the UAW Local 4121, who have demonstrated all along what the best fighting traditions in the labor movement are. And those traditions, those best traditions mean you don't kiss up to Jeff Bezos and Amazon, but you fight with working people and with oppressed people on the streets. And I also wanted to thank members of Socialist Alternative, who have been part of the backbone of the struggle in Seattle. I've made the point in the past that this regressive budget that the mayor sent to council is completely unacceptable, it's an unacceptable big business oriented budget that in fact goes further than recent Seattle budgets in cutting vital public services. While the mayor and the majority of the council have waxed eloquent about their commitment to address the, to addressing the city's affordable housing crisis, the acute crisis that we are in, and the homelessness emergency, as a matter of fact, less than 1% of the total budget is being allocated to affordable housing, and as a matter of fact, Mayor Durkin and the establishment couldn't legally have spent any less, you know, the, less than 1%, they couldn't have spent any less than that because those are levy monies and other monies that were already allocated. So as far as the budget work this season goes, there's really virtually nothing for affordable housing. That doesn't mean that the amendments that are being passed are bad, they are all good amendments, and so I will be supporting them, but the point is that our movement and people who are struggling for affordable housing are tired of receiving little crumbs and then having politicians pat themselves on the back and said that they passed a good budget, no, it's overall not a good thing. Later in this afternoon, unfortunately, because this meeting will be ended soon temporarily, we will be voting on budget amendments to substantially shift the city's priorities towards spending millions on affordable housing, and I don't know how many of you can be there, but you all saw that, you know, councilmembers have talked about their commitment for housing, so we'll see what happens with those amendments later on today. But in the meanwhile, it's also important for our People's Budget Movement to note the things that we have won and are already included in the so-called consent package or balancing package, and it's important to recognize this because these are victories that we have won through building and organizing on the ground. We have won funding for LGBTQ senior center services, we have created dedicated funding for the annual Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration, we have restored the funding to keep the 217 shared wheel shelter beds open that the mayor keeps attempting to eliminate, and including other important issues such as funding for trans services and green jobs for young people. I note these gains because our movement should draw confidence from what we can win, that when we organize and fight, we can make gains for working people and the oppressed. Many of you were there with us at our tremendous People's Budget Affordable Housing Rally just a few days ago, on November 7th, exactly a week ago, it was electric, and it was full of ordinary working people who say, who are demanding, people of all races and all genders, demanding affordable housing, and I really want to applaud Naomi Finkelstein as well, who said that as a trans person, the one thing you can do for me is to give me affordable As I said, I will be voting yes on this balancing package of budget amendments because these include progressive gains for working people, but I will not obviously support the overall budget in its current form because it's a regressive big business budget that reflects the priorities of big business and not working people. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you for those words, Councilmember Swant, and I also want to acknowledge the good work that Councilmember Gonzalez and others up here have done on the LGBTQ effort, so thank you for that, I didn't want that to get overshadowed. Okay, so we'll move to item number 73.
We need to pass the consent document.
No, we already did.
I think it's in front of us now, and we just are going through each one of your items, so we'll take 73, you can discuss it, and then we'll vote on it.
I apologize, as my colleague was reminding me, it's been so long ago that I forgot that we did that already. So item number 73, I had fought for the chair's proposal to originally include general fund revenue to hire a new position within the Department of Construction and Inspections to handle the amount of code revisions that have been coming out of council. That was not included in the balancing package, what was included in the balancing package was a proviso of their current general fund funding to position dedicated to council resources. I don't think it's appropriate for council to proviso those general fund dollars for a particular position to just be dedicated to us, so I would, I don't know what the process looks like, if we're asking for a no vote, or if we're just asking this to be removed for consideration, but whichever way it is, I don't think this is a great idea, and we encourage my colleagues to reject the idea of provisoing a portion of the SDCI funds in this way.
Mechanically, the three items that were removed for individual consideration, the process is if someone wishes to move the adoption of the item, then you, then you can vote, if it's seconded, then you can vote for or against it.
So Eric, in this case that it's in front of us, does Councilmember Johnson move to bring it back, or since he's already pulled it out, that we vote to have to put it back in?
I don't believe this item has actually been moved for adoption, and so if no one moves it, then I guess we can just move along, that's maybe not the best turn of phrase, but if anyone wishes to move this item and that's seconded, then that would be the time to vote either for or against.
Okay, Councilmember O'Brien?
Yeah, so I would like to move this, and I'd like to speak to it.
Do you have a second? Okay, moved and seconded.
You know, this is an ongoing challenge, and it's probably, we probably don't have the time to thoroughly vet the pros and cons of this here, but we'll have to make a decision shortly. I understand the challenge of having, I understand why a department would be not interested in having some of their staff be dedicated to focus on council priorities, but one of the challenges we've had is, as we're working on some very complex issues around code enforcement and land use policies at the city, I think having some collaboration there and having some authority to direct some folks is really critical. And when we look at the list of projects that are on the work plan for next year, projects like West Edge Alley Standards, standards for solid waste storage, upgrading tree regulations, standard for tiny homes, SEPA categorical exemptions for infill development, environmental review on council-initiated land use legislation, we could, I guess, take that position out of the department and put it in the legislative department, but I think provisoing and saying, hey, you have a bunch of code folks, we want to make sure that a small portion of them are going to be dedicated to what the council identifies as our priorities as opposed to executive priorities, seems to be a path that supports collectively the issues we want to work on. I am certainly open to conversations going forward about better ways to do this dance and manage it, and if there's other ways to get those commitments and make sure that we have the resources for our priorities, but at the moment, short of some other brilliant idea, I don't think, I think undoing this or not doing this would leave us stranded and not be able to achieve some of the objectives that we have identified as priorities from the council.
Other comments, Councilmember Herbold?
Yeah, I just want to ask central staff if in their recollection, this is a practice that we've done in the past, I believe it is, we've kind of gone back and forth between provisoing money for our priorities and, or adding things to the work plan, I think we've used both approaches before.
That is correct, this has been used previously in various forms, typically there is some ordinance or resolution which would be required for this proviso as well to identify those council priorities, and I was also just remind the committee that this amount represents approximately the equivalent of one FTE, but it is not necessarily a person who will be dedicated to council priorities, the equivalent of one FTE will be dedicated to council priorities, and this is essentially placing a proviso on the position that this, that the council added last year to work on council priorities.
So did that answer clear up what you were looking for, Councilmember Herbold? Councilmember Johnson, you want to speak more to this?
I mean, I would just again say, you know, the code development team within the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections of memory serves me as five or six people, those five or six people are working on a lot of different issues throughout the city. If you add up the time that each of those five or six people spend, I guarantee you we get more than one FTE. So I guess provisoing that we spend one FTE of those five or six people on council budgets, not going to have a real impact there, because I think we probably already get the equivalent of one FTE, it's a policy statement that the council is making. I had wished that we were adding an additional staff member to the team, that's not where we landed, I don't think materially this proviso is going to make much of a difference about the work that they do, because I would guess if I were the department's director, I would just say, okay, well, we'll divide it up and make sure that at minimum we're spending the one FTE worth of time on this, on council identified priorities, but I can guarantee you that that's the case. So I'm not going to die on the hill on this fight, but I just, it feels like what we're asking for is something that we're already getting, and I wanted to ask for more, so what we're already getting is not quite satisfactory, and we're not going to get more, so I'm going to vote no from a procedural perspective, but it doesn't really matter to me.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll add, Councilmember Johnson, I appreciate that, and I think you're, I don't disagree with anything you said, I think you're right that we probably get that. I think the place where this shows up is if there is a contentious policy issue that the council has set as a priority and the executive directs staff not to work on it, then we're stuck, and so this is a place where we can say, no, we need some of your time to work on this policy, that's what the budget was for, and we get to pick those. I think in practice, you're probably right, there's usually pretty strong alignment, and it may not have a significant difference, but I do think there's some value in having the proviso, just in case that that situation would arise in the future.
Well, I think this is an interesting question, frankly, I don't see that we're going to attain a lot either with it or without it, it seems to me much more important that we're dealing closely with SDCI, making sure that our principles, what we need, what we're looking for, are clear in the work plan going forward in 2019. Councilmember Johnson, I'm going to support you on this in no small part, because I think that more conversations are important with that particular department, but like you, it's not one where I'm going to get too exercised one way or the other, so I'm going to call for a vote on this. Councilmember O'Brien has moved it, it's been seconded by Councilmember Herbold, those in favor of supporting this, please vote aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, one, two, are you getting the count? Those opposed? One, two, three? Okay, thank you, this, that will pass and proceed. Councilmember Johnson, do you want to move item 77?
I'd just like to speak to items 77 and 79 together, if that's okay, since they are interrelated. It's a little complicated because item 77 does have elements of the SDCI fee ordinance that are not related to the vacant building monitoring program, so I'm gonna just sort of tie these conversations together around the vacant building monitoring program and ask for a little bit of direction from central staff about how to proceed. So the vacant building monitoring program is something that Councilmember Herbold and I have been talking about for several years now, we had a conversation most recently in committee in the fall before we undertook the budget process about how the 2017 legislation that we adopted around vacant building monitoring was working. Last night, in response to the discussion that we were going to have today, I received a memo that I just handed out to the rest of my colleagues from the Department of Construction and Inspections, it's a three-page memo, it outlines some concerns that they have with the program going forward. I want to spend just a couple of minutes talking about those concerns, but upfront, just want to say, my objective here is not to stifle a conversation about vacant building monitoring, but rather to ask for additional time to be dedicated in my committee after the budget process, to allow for us to adequately discuss the policy choices that are outlined in this bill, much in the same way that the council suggested that I do the same with the short-term rental bill, and other council members have also suggested that we do the same for things like the creation of the Employee Ombudsman Program. The proposal that Councilmember Herbold has put forward has some concerns identified from the Department of Construction and Inspections around a couple of places. One, their concern is that the program would add all properties that are currently vacant buildings, including those that are undergoing permit applications, so you may have a building in your neighborhood that is very well-maintained, that you may not know is vacant, the program would then apply a fee to those buildings, and it will also kind of create a database that allows for the public to see that that building is a vacant building. There's a concern that that would sort of advertise that building as vacant and make it more vulnerable to illegal entry, and also that the... it more vulnerable to legal entry, and also that the well-maintained vacant buildings may end up deteriorating as a result of being sort of advertised in this way. The program also would penalize folks that are in the development process who are waiting for permits. So you may be a vacant building that is well-maintained, that would love to get started, but you're waiting on the SDCI staff to give you your appropriate permits to move forward. And they're concerned that the sort of permit volume issues and longer permit review times would sort of be an additional burden on those folks that are trying to both maintain the building that is well-maintained and then also add additional cost to the production of housing and development. They're concerned about the permit applications for remodels. So if you're doing a single-family remodel and it's significant enough to cause you to vacate the premises for a couple of months, rent another property nearby or in a different part of the city. Those projects would now be included in the vacant building monitoring program. So again, those individuals that are doing remodels are going to have to pay for permits that they don't have to pay for now. And their additional concern is that the program has about one-third of its invoices go unpaid. So as of right now, their concern is that the program won't pay for itself, both because of increased costs to implement the program and generally because they think that some of these other buildings that would be part of the monitoring program may not be the kinds of buildings that would likely pay when an invoice comes to them. So, you know, just generally, I think that this is a project that we've been working on for several years now. We have identified concerns from the Department of Construction and Inspections. I love the chance for us as a planning, land use, and zoning committee to adequately understand those concerns and work the bill through a legislative process. I understand that Councilmember Herbold is upset with this. I, although the memo is dated November 7, 2018, I only received it yesterday at 5:15. So I'm carrying water here late for a department that has asked me to consider this as an option. Happy to answer questions that folks have. But before we get to that, I wonder, item 79 is the item that would actually implement the vacant building monitoring changes that are proposed. Item 77 is a related item, because it implements fees that would pay for staff members to augment an expanded program, but it also implements a whole lot of other fees as well. So procedurally, I wonder if we should take up item 79 first to influence what kind of changes might be necessary to item 77. If I'm wrong and I lose the vote, then we don't probably need to touch or change item 77 at all. And if the chair is interested in that, if I do end up getting the votes, then we probably need to have some more time to understand what the budgetary implications are for item 77. But at this point, Mr. Freeman's grabbing the microphone, so I'll cede my time to his expertise.
Kedall Freeman, Council Central Staff. Just by way of a reminder, this committee will meet again on Monday prior to a full council vote that afternoon on the budget package, assuming that there's a recommendation today. On Monday, there's an opportunity to rescind any green sheets that passed today and make any corrections as needed to those green sheets. So for example, if the council does not approve the vacant building monitoring program in item number 79, that we can have a rescinding green sheet on Monday that would modify the fee ordinance to back out the fees that are predicated on that program being changed.
And so having said that, if the chair or other council member would wish to move adoption of item 79 before item 77, then you could certainly do that.
Okay. Any other comments on this, Councilmember Herbold?
So should we make a motion first before we continue the discussion? Or?
So then I will move item number 79 to be removed from the green sheet as well as--
I don't think we move to remove.
I want to move it and recommend a no vote.
Yeah, I believe what might be suitable at this point is a motion to adopt Green Sheet 33-11B1, which is item number 79 on the agenda.
And to adopt it, and then we just proceed on having a vote on whether it goes forward or not? Okay, well, I will so move the adoption, and it's been seconded. Any other comments on this? Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you for the opportunity to respond. I, like Councilmember Johnson, find it's a little unfortunate that we're just getting this email from SDCI now. Not only have we been working this issue through committee, but Kedall Freeman has been very much in contact in the development of the budget proposal. And I'm going to ask him to respond to some of the items in the email, but just broadly. I think you may have misspoke, but your opening remark was that all vacant buildings, including those in the development process, would be entered into the monitoring program. That is not the case. It is all buildings in the development process would be entered, not all vacant buildings in the city. All vacant buildings in the development process, in addition to some other high-priority buildings. The recommendation to develop a program around those buildings that are in the development process was actually a recommendation of SDCI in the September report, well, actually, it was an April report that we heard in your committee in September. So that was their recommendation, is that we start there. I think some of the concerns around the question of whether or not these properties being entered into a database will create a problem. We already have a vacant building monitoring program. This is simply to make it more effective. We have a vacant building monitoring program with 43 properties in them. Those addresses, should people want to find them, they can find them. The idea with this approach, though, is that the funds would go to monitor the properties monthly. Right now, they're only monitoring them quarterly. And so that robust monitoring of more properties, I think, is going to have a really positive impact on our communities that have a lot of these properties in them. And I understand, you know, just from talking to members of the public who aren't in my district about this issue, that a lot of people don't live in those kinds of neighborhoods that have a lot of vacant buildings. Many of my constituents do. I do myself. And District 1, for instance, we have, in 2017, we had 95 active vacant building complaints, and there was only one property in the program. As it relates to the revenue recovery issue, we've been working really closely with both the Law Department and Collections to come up with an approach that helps address the revenue recovery question and make it so that they're able to administratively make a, put a note on a deed, so that it's not a hold on a deed, but it still, it functions the same way so that when properties are sold, the payment comes in. It might be a little bit late. But that's something that the, I don't think the green sheet nor the legislation addresses. There are administrative things that we're working with both Collections and FAS and Law on. But other than that, Kedall, if you could respond--
Sure, I think I can speak a little bit to the cost issue. We have gotten, I can, I think it's fair to characterize it as conflicting information from SDCI about what the cost of an enhanced program might be. On the one hand, SDCI has estimated that it would cost an additional number of inspectors and vehicles. It's about a $480,000 ongoing cost. But they've also estimated that additional revenue generated from the program, from fines, et cetera, would be over that, about $700,000. We've established a new fee anyway to help SDCI with cost recovery for the program. I think that fee with the additional fines that may come to SDCI through the program would be about $1 million. So I'm not, I don't, it's a little bit hard to know what information SDCI is relying on when they're saying that there may be additional costs here. That might be something that would lend itself to a committee process. That's also something that might lend itself to further review before the program becomes effective. And as it is now, the ordinance that would establish the program becomes effective on April 1, 2019, so there is some time here for the council to look at changes.
And one other point is that we have identified some items that, legislative items related to this program around issues related to, and these are other recommendations that SDCI brought to us in its report last year, is whether or not we should take a look at some of the existing vacant building maintenance standards, make some changes to those, look at the possibility of allowing vacant buildings that are up to code and in the development process, allowing them to be exempt from the monitoring program if they have a caretaker on site. And so there are a number of items that we have in this action made a commitment to work at, work on through the committee process.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up question on that? And maybe this is directed to you, Councilmember Johnson. If this does not become effective until the 1st of April, and you essentially have, if you think about December through the 1st of April, you have four months, is that enough time in your committee to be able to address these questions, particularly if what you're saying, Kedall, is that more money will be coming in than we anticipate? Because I'm quite sure that what SDCI is worried about is that we're asking for resources but aren't funding them.
The brief answer is yes, and sort of as part of my closing remarks, I was going to mention that with an effective date of April 1, you know, I'm happy to hold to that continued effective date of April 1, and happy to ensure that we have plenty of time and space in January and February to consider this legislation and hold that effective date of April 1. So from my perspective, a little bit of extra time and energy at a committee seems warranted. I, you know, I again apologize to my colleague for being so late in the game in this discussion, but it feels like it's a big enough set of changes and a big enough set of concerns from a large enough department that it felt necessary to bring it to the attention of my colleagues. And I will plan to vote in opposition to this with the recognition that I've made a commitment here, if we do oppose, to make the space in the committee in January and February to get this bill in front of the full council and continue with an effective date of April 1.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question? If it does pass, is that time still available in your committee?
It would depend, it would depend on what else we need to discuss, but if it does pass, we can certainly talk about it. I think that the urgency decreases, but we can certainly talk about it.
So let me ask this question, and Councilmember O'Brien, you're next up here. If, for reasons that have nothing to do with today's discussion, but in Councilmember Johnson's committee, that he needed an additional month or so, what, is there an opportunity to say, you know, honor before May 1 or June 1? I'm looking to you, Councilmember Herbold. I hear the urgency, and of course, we'd want to stick with that date, but I wouldn't want to tie his hands if he needed some more time.
I think, I would defer to Central Staff, Freeman, whether or not the additional time might be useful. I don't have strong feelings in moving the implementation day back another couple months, but I don't want to do it if it's unnecessary. But I also feel really strongly that I would really like to vote this out.
Yeah, I hear you.
Chair Bagshaw, if I may, I don't want to obscure the debate on this or the progress, but if council members are uncomfortable voting at just this moment, want the opportunity to discuss possible revisions, and feel that that could potentially be, you could be in a different position to discuss this this afternoon, you could make a motion with sufficient support to hold these items until later in the agenda this afternoon.
Please, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to signal that this is a lot of policy happening right here, and, you know, that's like two and a half pages of single-spaced 11-point font text that is incredibly technical, and not all of us sit on the Plus Committee. And so I'm feeling like I have no idea what's happening right now, and that's an overstatement, obviously. But I feel like I need a little bit more time to absorb what's happening, so I'm just going to signal my intent to abstain on this particular issue, because I feel like I don't, I have not had sufficient time to fully understand what the competing interests are, what we're trying to solve for, and what the appropriate solution might be. So I just want to, for what it's worth, I just want to signal that I'm going to abstain on this one.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Brien?
Thank you. Colleagues, I agree that this is complex. I think I fully support Councilmember Herbold's commitment to continued improvement to vacant building monitoring, and I think we need to move that direction with urgency. As my other colleague says, it's a little hard to digest so much information at a late notice that does appear to raise some, what I would call unintended consequences. At the same time, when I'm reading the legislation and comparing it, it doesn't seem like it does what they say it does. So I think there's some work to be done. I don't think that's the kind of work that's going to happen between now and this afternoon or even on Monday. So there's a couple paths we could go down. One would be to not do it with a commitment to come back and do something. The other would be to do it with a commitment to figure out how to address the concerns. I would probably be in support of moving forward with this as is, with either the existing deadline or extending it a month or two, to create a sense of this is real, this is urgent. We need the department to come back to the committee and talk through these consequences and less understand if those are real unintended consequences, or there's just a misunderstanding, or perhaps there's some language in the bill that needs to be cleaned up to address that. But I don't think it's appropriate for us to spend too much more time on it, either today or between now and Monday. So I would, I'd probably support voting yes on this with an understanding that there's clearly some policy work that needs to be talked about and perhaps some changes.
Okay. Councilmember Wirth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to support Councilmember Herbold in both these matters, and I'm just going to go back to something that I find, we kind of all do this, sometimes walk things on at the last minute, but we're in the middle of budget, and this is where we're at now in the process. We have been dealing with these issues. This is like the fourth time that I've seen this sheet and these issues, and I really think that this is where we're at, and we need to just vote on it. It's in the packaging, it's in the balancing, and it's just not good policy. As Councilmember Gonzalez pointed out, we're doing policy right now. We've already, should have done that already. This is the recommendation. This is what came in the balancing budget. I know we give people an opportunity to speak to it, but at this late point, I want to respect the process and the fact that we're in budget, and so I will be voting to maintain what Councilmember Herbold did on matters in my binder, number, is it 77 and 79?
79, 77.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Well, I have two thoughts here. One is, I really don't want to be revisiting it this afternoon. We've got a lot on the agenda. I do want to give Councilmember Johnson time in his committee to really review this. Councilmember Herbold, I concur with what your objectives. So may I offer this, that if we make a change rather than April 1 to June 1, gives another 60 days. And with that, I'd be happy to move this out.
Thank you. I would consider that a friendly amendment.
Okay. And can we do that, or do I have to do something? Do I have to pull and substitute--
Voice amendment to Green Sheet 33-1B1.
Yes.
Yeah, that would test correctly.
33-11B1.
Right, so if I need to move to amend that, to change the date from April 1 to June 1, and it's honor before June 1, so if by some magic, they can do it sooner. Ali, do you have a worry?
No, no worries. I think you're amending the effective date of the ordinance. From April 1 to June 1.
And that's the motion that's before us.
Yeah.
May I ask a procedural question, Madam Chair? So I'd love Central Staff to answer the question about what legislative pathways exist if we were to adopt this today and it had an effective date of June 1, and something were to come up over the course of the first six months? Would we just then bring another, a new bill forward to amend the legislation between now and June 1 to be more consistent or to address concerns that might come up from community or from the department?
Yeah, so I can speak to that. Just, this is sort of a distinction without a difference, but it's an important technical distinction. The way the ordinance is written now, it becomes effective with the standard provisions after 30 days, but the substantive provisions, so the sections of the bill that amended the SMC to establish the new program, don't become effective until April 1, 2019. And that deferred effectiveness is in Section 3 of the bill, so if you were to amend it here on the fly, it'd be amending Section 3 of the bill to make it such that Sections 1 and Section 2 of the ordinance take effect on June 1, 2019, as opposed to April 1, 2019. But with respect to your question, Councilmember Johnson, it'd be as simple as just introducing another bill that either amends the effective date of this bill or changes this bill such that the substantive provisions about the enhanced vacant building monitoring program reflect on what the committee has, may recommend through further review.
Okay. Are we clear on that? All right, so if I have effectively amended that date to honor before June 1 for the substantive review, Kedall, Eric?
So the motion's been made to make that amendment. The next would be to have a vote on the amendment.
Okay, so we're, all right.
Just a question.
Okay. So moved and seconded to change the date to honor before June 1, and then Council President Harrell has a question.
So I'm sort of in the Gonzalez camp here, that. There's a lot of policy stuff going on here, which is really cool. So the proposal advancing by Councilmember Herbold results in a lot of potential new revenue, a million or so roughly. revenue, a million or so roughly, a good chunk of change, right?
Kedall, can you repeat that about the fines?
Sure. So currently, the program could bring in up to $700,000 or more, depending on how many buildings are covered by the program, in new fee revenue. Most of that revenue is not going to go into the general fund, so don't get your hopes up there. Most of that revenue will go into fund balance to fund ongoing enforcement actions by SDCI.
Okay. It's fee recovery kind of work, and to support the program. And Councilmember Johnson, I think, is the policy lead on this kind of work has brought, I think, some pretty valid concerns. It could be echoed from both the community and the department. I don't know where all your feedback's coming from. But if we are, so the bottom line is, we're sort of, by changing the date, it gives us a little more time to do policy work. And even if we do that policy work early next year, it won't affect our balancing package now because it's fee recovery work. So, and I, because I was multitasking, the date change, Councilmember Johnson, were you receiving that as a positive step toward what you were trying to achieve? Not the best step, but a positive step, or I just didn't hear your feedback on that.
I haven't made up my mind yet, Council President. No, I think generally, you know, this highlights, I think, the reason why I wanted to bring this issue forward. It's a, the department and other members in the community have flagged this as what they would consider to be a significant enough change to make sure that it was brought up during the budgeting process as a change that is happening. And if we're changing the effective date to June 1, I think that gives us more time to continue to work with affected stakeholders on what may be the pros and cons of some of the approaches taken in the bill. That's not the usual approach that we do with budgetary items. When we have sort of substantive policy issues, we generally handle those in substantive policy committees. I had not understood, frankly, given the volume of issues that we're dealing with in the budget process, the impact that the department felt that this change would have to them. So I'm carrying their water, late to the game. I understand that that's mixing a lot of different metaphors, but I'm hopeful that with an effective date of June 1, that that will allow for us to address some of those concerns. And if a new bill does need to come forward in order to address any of those concerns that we could have the first couple of months, the first quarter of next year, to be able to address concerns that may come forward from the community or from the department. But of course, that's complicated because we've already passed a bill with a set of policy objectives, and then we're kind of walking that back. So that has its own set of challenges associated with it, too. But generally, I recognize that it's past the time that everybody wants to leave to go to this Spog's press conference, so why don't we stop talking about it and maybe call the question on issue 79, and we'll see where the votes land and move on.
So, and I believe first, the motion to amend this to, the green sheet to amend Council Bill 119407 to have an effective date for Sections 2 and 3 to be June 1 on June 1.
Thank you. That's our first vote.
And you can first vote on the amendment.
Okay. So we will vote on that first, which is the amendment to the council bill that is now in front of us, which is just changing the date. So all those in favor of changing the date on that Green Sheet number 79, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So now we have an amendment in front of us with that amendment date, and it's been moved and seconded. Do you have anything else you'd like to say to it?
I think in the spirit of Councilmember Johnson's suggestion that we wrap this up and so folks can get to where they're gonna go, I would call the question.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of moving forward with the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
None.
And an abstention. Okay. So that has brought us up, that has brought us up to pulling the green sheet on the consent package, and if there's no objection, the Budget Committee will now be in recess.
If I may. So the other item was sort of skipped over, item 77, which is the actual fee ordinance. You may wish to address that, and then when we come back in the afternoon, we can deal with the one item, the Spog item that was added to the first group.
Okay.
I'd move approval of that for the sake of time.
Okay. Yeah, wait a second. Thank you for keeping us long. Ali?
I'm not voting, I'm just trying to get attention.
Ali?
I'll just note that the legislation in item 77, Council Bill 11936, would also need to be amended to modify the effective date of Section 15 from, to take effect on June 1 instead of April 1. That is the section that is the vacant building fees that are associated with the vacant building ordinance.
Okay.
I move to amend Section 15 to change the effective date of the fee to June 1.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 All right. Any opposed? Okay, and she's not abstaining, so it looks like--
One last thought, to approve item 77 as amended.
Right. Thank you very much, those in favor of--
Second.
Thank you. Moving, seconded, to approve 77 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, no abstentions? Looks like we've got that. Now, I'm sorry we don't have time to do the Spog one.
First thing in the--
Okay. All right. So then if there is no objection, we're going to go into recess until, what, 2:00? Is that what's on there?
All right.
Right, 2:00? Okay. So hearing no objection, we're in recess till 2:00. Okay?